A very warm welcome to my channel Travel Guide. Today I am exploring very beautiful places, I hope you will enjoy, so let us explore with me.
Alright, so Jude has very graciously brought our boffer, I'll show it off to the crowd. So this is actually a weapon that the laph is used and it is made out of foam. So it is quite safe, it is quite squishy and that means that when you put it in the arms of babes, they're not going to suffer and they are going to give a lot of good beating. So it is very light, it's very dexterous and it is perfect for when you don't want to wear too much armour. Yeah, so this is what we will use for the kids. So it is age 16 is when you can start using the big heavy weapons or any of the steels. But if you want to just get in and have a bit, then these are called boffer weapons in Alpha. They're made out of foam, they're very safe, they're very durable. So all of these little scrubs that you see by the door, they can all get in on this from the ground floor. At one of our recent events, I actually saw...
You have to place 13 needles. But we do have a lot of parents who come along to our events and have to bring their little kiddies along and that's okay, they can play civilian characters. We currently have a gentleman called Andrew who with his son nicknamed P. Archon. They run a... And don't forget folks, at 2:30 we are doing an actual script demonstration. This is just us kind of mucking around. But at 2:30 we'll be talking about the hobby, we'll be talking about all the segments that goes into pretending and we'll be talking a bit about the difference between battle games and live action role playing. Something we didn't mention in the demo before folks is that laph bores. If you are into archery yourself, have a poundage that goes up to around about 30 pounds. Lost in real life history, people using things like longbows would sometimes be drawing on 100 pounds, which is why they had excellent back muscles.
Well done, I don't know what bribery you gave, but it obviously worked. So Jacob and Otis against Owen.
It looks like we have only two left standing, maybe three, maybe four? Alright, give them a cheer folks. We feed on applause. Give them a cheer as they fight for you, commit! It is exactly like that anime I was just watching. Folks, do you think they would fight faster if they threw their arms out behind them? That's one point to Gallanath. This time it's Halberd versus Greatsword. The Halberd has slightly more reach, the extra dagger, I don't know what that's about. I'm sure there's a plan hidden in there somewhere. But while the Halberd has some extra reach and the style of Halberd is something, I believe an epic armoury Halberd, which is nice and fast, but Gallanath is fighting with what I think is a Cali sword, is that right? Oh, a Telia's Nemesis, yes pricey but very pretty and also they have a lot of weight behind them, makes them a little bit harder to block, but very good to block with. Alright, Nemesis versus Shield. That's how laphers tell another lapher that they're feeling tired, they need to go take a sit down. Please kill me. You will know folks that the strikes are not straight down onto the head or right towards the face, they're actually aimed towards the shoulders, the upper arms, the legs and the torso. And if you want to get into lapping, then the best thing you can practise is something called the Six Cuts, which as the challenges continue to enter the field, I'll simply demonstrate way back over here. I'll see whether... Two wielding designs.
1:30, if you go over to the Field of Honour at the moment, we have Lethio Sextus Witrix. They are the Roman originary group and they are doing military parades and drills, demonstrating how the Roman army did their manoeuvres back in the days when the glory days of Rome. Now ladies and gentlemen, there is entertainment all around the venue. There is woodcrafters and blacksmiths and there's a traders village centre. There are wonderful storeholders with all sorts of wonderful medieval wares available for purchase. We have camel rides, we have pony rides, there is axe throwing and there is a Romani gypsy village where they have their gypsy caravans on display for you to have a look at as well. Now ladies and gentlemen, the Colby Centre also have a fully licensed bar for your projectiles display. Just calling you to find your spot around the jousting arena so that you can watch the projectiles display, which will be kicking in another three minutes here in the jousting arena. Now while they are doing their projectiles display, we're also going to have the combat foot group, Iron Heliya. They will be doing their Metal Weapons Foot Tournament all the way up in the Field of Honour and that is real weapons and armour being demonstrated from the medieval period, showing you how war was fought in the medieval period and that's at 1:30 in the Field of Honour with Iron Heliya.
Sort of akin to Javelin is this, an Adal. Does anyone not know what that is? Okay, I can see at least one hand to a... This essentially lengthens your arm. So arm, one, two, this becomes number three. And this lets you get a lot more range of motion when you're throwing and it can dramatically improve how far you can launch. Now, the issue today, these arrows. Losing from the saddle are not heavy enough. So it doesn't look as impressive as it could. But the reason we do that is to save them, we don't want you guys to get hurt. See, you could see that one there, it pulled up and it slowed down and it stopped. The reason for that is they are light and they have safety heads on them. Because on a windy day like this, we don't want it going 150 metres that way and turning someone into a pincushion. Now next, we have something that I'm sure our Roman friends would know. This is called a Fumbar. It's a dart, a very heavy mean dart. You might think, you can't do much better than this. This is heavy, lead, this is a steel shaft with a pointy end. This is going to go into any skin it hits and it's gonna hurt. It might not kill you, but think of how many more of these you can carry on you than javelins. Now imagine, let's say a Roman proverb, having multiple of these agents just tossing them at their lightly armed enemies as their enemies are charging. It would not be a good charge. They're tiny, ain't they? Just small little things that cause a great deal of pain. Especially if they get in through a chink in your armour, like your eyes, maybe your neck, groin. It would hurt. So now we move on to the most classic. So first, axes, you can throw axes. They're heavy, they have a blade. It's not the primary use of an axe, but in a pinch. Well done. And again, axes, you can carry a few of them on you. I know when I'm in my combat kit, I usually have Emily's art weapons on me, right? Bit bigger, hominid axe, the head of your enemy. Well, I said I was terrible at throwing it, each other. Now something a bit more effective than a seven head is our first weapon that we're gonna try today. So let's get a javelin team out here. A javelin essentially, sword gear is very heavy, using it a lot of impact. Now these guys are absolute professional javelin shows. They've been doing this for years, for at least 30 minutes. And let's see how they go. That was some decent throwing. Now, again, I said these guys are professionals, they're not, they're volunteers. But I think that was pretty good, it was impressive. There's one sticking out of the hay there, there's one sticking out of the hay there. But back in the days, there were stories about people throwing javelins up to 80 metres. It's incredible when you think about it, having that much pointy mass heading at you. And you wouldn't throw them as an individual, you would throw them as part of a group. And we can't represent that here, we don't have enough javelins. But imagine how frantic it would be trying to count under one of these shields when you have hundreds of these things raining on you. Now, the next thing we have, sort of akin to javelins, is this, an Adal. Does anyone not know what that is? Okay, I can see at least one hand to a... This essentially lengthens your arm. So arm, one, two, this becomes number three. And this lets you get a lot more range of motion when you're throwing and it can dramatically improve how far you can launch. Now, the issue today, these arrows. Losing from the saddle are not heavy enough. So it doesn't look as impressive as it could. It's fast, it's quiet, you can carry a lot of arrows on you. And well, if they weren't effective, you wouldn't see them in almost all arc lanes. But they weren't used by just one bald man. They were used as part of a unit. So would you all like to see a volley? Alright, our archers are gonna get ready and I'm gonna call out the orders. And if they go out of line of my orders, well...
They will get shot.
That head there, that was all about four of my men. So are you ready archers? Now pay attention crowd, I'm gonna get you guys to run through this next. Watch my arm movement and the command I'm giving. Knock! Draw! It's pretty simple, right? You guys think that you can do that? My arm movement, but you give the commands. Are you ready? I need it to be a bit louder. They can fill you full of tony holes. Now, speaking of bows. A mini bowlerster or a really, really big crossbowker. And it works pretty simply. You pull this rope back, you not make your decision. You vote the bolt, then you release. Now again, these are safety arrows. They are light, they do not travel as far or as hard as they would. Imagine if those were proper arrows with steel tips. There would be a lot of unhappy people over there. Okay, so that was our first secret weapon. We move on to the next one. This is a trebuchet. It's a little baby trebuchet for the reasons I said earlier. Safety first, can't, you know, kill the people at the show, it's boring, but I get it. I don't want to go to prison. This works by use of physics. You have a lot of weight in this basket, this basket is attached to this arm. And the end of this arm, you have a sling that has a projectile in it. That's locked in place, when that pit is pulled, this basket drops. This arm swings up and launches that projectile. So... A trained siege crew is a very valuable tool. That's why they get paid so much. And you can fire pretty much any type of projectile that will fit in the sling. Bricks, rocks, folders, cows. You can see, you have one person on each side to stabilise. You have the long arm and you have four people ready to pull. And what it works is a lot more impressive.
And our knights are powered by your cheers. Ladies and gentlemen, as they come down the hill, make some noise! I have only one question for you. Do you wanna see a joust? That was pretty good, but you can do better. Do you wanna see a joust? We are in the World Jousting Championships, ladies and gentlemen. Being contested right here in Blacktown, Sydney, Australia. First among equals, ladies and gentlemen, I give you Lady Liberty Demon. A round of applause for Lady Liberty. She's got the yellow feathers and she's riding Leroy, whose last name is not Jenkins. And he's an Appaloosa and he's running green, looks rather fetching. Lady Liberty has been jousting for four years. She came second at the Abbey Medieval Festival, right down to the last pass, ladies and gentlemen. She is the highest ranked horse archer in Australia and she attended the World Championships of Horse Archery in Mongolia. A round of applause for Lady Liberty Demon! Next, I give you Sir Justin Holland. Sir Justin is riding Willow, a standard brand. He also won at Zermatt Neve in Holland. I give you Sir Justin Holland. Next, I give you Sir Clifford Marisma. Sir Clifford is riding Imperius, who is a horseman. When I asked Sir Clifford for some details of his many victories, he said to me, "I've won some and I've lost some and I might win another one." And he's married to Lady Renee Marisma, who was out here earlier today. She's down on the field judging, no bias whatsoever. Finally, I give you Sir Andrew McKinnon, ladies and gentlemen. A round of applause for Sir Andrew. Sir Andrew is riding Yvora, a Persertron. Sir Andrew wants you to know that he's a Toon Gavvy boy, born and bred. He is the owner of the World Jousting Championships, an experienced international jester, a finalist in Moscow at the tournament of St George and the winner here on this very field last year in 2023. A round of applause for Sir Andrew. Sir Justin, ladies and gentlemen. Nicely done gentlemen. See a nice little bit of sportsmanship as they acknowledge each other coming down the field. Now ladies and gentlemen, Sir Andrew has his lance and is ready. Sir Justin is off and racing! Now you'll notice there, Sir Justin had an issue. He didn't put his lance down, but he maintained position for Sir Andrew to be able to strike him. It's considered quite unsportsmanlike to not present a good target. More important than striking the target yourself. So I don't know what the issue was, but Sir Justin has displayed incredible chivalry there. And cheer for them. Who's going for Sir Clifford? And who's going for Lady Liberty? One point for Lady Liberty. Just waiting for now. Now what you'll see there is Sir Clifford's lance broke off, but it didn't strike the correct target zone. So despite the fact that he broke his lance and it looked really cool, he gets no points. Let's give him an "aw". And they're getting set up for the next pass. So now it's on display. We have Sir Andrew and Sir Justin wearing a type of helmet known as an arme. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen. Gotta rock your socks ladies and gentlemen. One point for Sir Cliff, one point for Lady Liberty. They have one pass left to run, ladies and gentlemen. I think Sir Clifford needs some encouragement. What do you say, we give him a cheer ladies and gentlemen? I'm not sure if he was saluting you or just pointing at his eyes and then pointing at her. It's got it for you. Alright, Sir Cliff, he's up his end, he's got his lance ladies and... Alright, Sir Cliff, he's up his end, he's got his lance, ladies and gentlemen. Lady Liberty is nearly in position. Why don't you make some noise for your knights? Let's see how they go, but their final pass together. I think we actually broke the red lance. Two points for Lady Liberty. Now ladies and gentlemen, our marshals confirm, you might notice that we don't normally snap the lances much down from the tip. And now, we're about to run our first pass. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen. Remember to cheer for your knights. Wonderful kid there. Two points for Lady Liberty, one point for Sir Andrew. It's anybody's match at this point. Check to review with a calculator. However, our victor of the Blacktown Medieval Fair Jousting Tournament is Lady Renee Marisma on 18 points. In second place, Sir Justin Holland on 18 points. And in third place, Lady Liberty Demon on 17 points. Alright ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks for watching my video and please like, subscribe and share so you can get my informative videos easily and more informative videos are going to come soon. Thank you.